And good evening, President Viascas. Are you able to hear me in the boardroom?
I can. Mr. Allen, can you hear me?
We can, and we are recording. It is 5:17 PM. So when you are ready, President Viascas.
I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. There are two closed session items on tonight's agenda. The first is conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 subsection D subsection 1. Name of case: Magali Kincaid, the Needle Waters Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Elections Now, Juan Niegus, Catalina Flores, Damaris Canton versus San Juan Unified School District, Complaint for Violation of the California Voting Rights Act and in the alternative for violation of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and the California Constitution, Sacramento Superior Court Case Number 34202000286475. And collective bargaining matters. Discussion with negotiator Jim Schumake, Assistant Superintendent Schools and Labor Relations regarding CSA Chapter 127, General Operations Support, chauffeurs, Teamsters Local Number 150, Transportation Supervisors, Teachers and Certified Supervisor Units, and regarding nonrepresented groups, Management and Confidential Units, Government Code Section 54957.6. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment on the closed session agenda items?
I'd be happy to, President Viascas. If you've joined us here on the Zoom meeting today and would like to offer a public comment regarding a topic that is on tonight's closed session agenda, now would be your opportunity to do so. You can do that by clicking that raise hand button found at the bottom of your screen on your mobile device or desktop client, or if you've called into the meeting tonight by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we have any public comments?
We do have one hand raised at this time.
Okay, I'd like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes per speaker and the clock on the screen counts down the time.
And with them, President Viascas, we will have our first speaker, who is Mr. Scott Rafferty. Mr. Rafferty, when you're ready, sir.
Good evening. A week ago, we received a several texts from President Viascas, which was patently incomplete. So now you have two lawsuits. We will prevail in every single document request we've made has been not just neglected, but we've been spoon-fed documents. You're not going to get away with that. Friday, Mr. Spinelli and I discussed the possibility of settlement. But today I received a hundreds of pages saying that somehow you think you're going to get summary judgment. Ain't going to happen. The California Voting Rights Act applies to you like every other jurisdiction. We did learn that trustee Creason was opposed to this on the grounds that after 2016, you were able to get a free ride to the next sentence. That's really not the way it works. And you deliberately postponed from the presidential election to gubernatorial election. Even if there was no polarized vote, racially polarized voting, that itself is a dilution of the minority voting strength. So again, you're you're just digging this hole deeper. We're not going anyplace. And you need to confront the reality that this is going to happen. Stop telling people that you're going to make it happen because nobody believes you. If they believe you, it would have happened 10 years ago. That that resolution is still in effect and the superintendent did nothing to implement it. So try to get this over with for the sake of the students and yourselves. You're not winning. Goodbye.
And now was the only hand we have raised at this time, President Viascas, and we have no written comments submitted for this agenda item.
Okay, and with that, we will now move into closed session and we will return to open session at 6:30. Thank you.
The board has moved into closed session. Open session is expected to begin at 6:30 PM tonight. We would invite you to return at that time. You are also more than welcome to stay on the Zoom with us and wait for the open session to begin again at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education back to order. The board is meeting in the boardroom at the district office safely, physically distanced and aligned with state and local health guidance. Public attendance is provided via the Zoom platform as well as as a live stream on the district's YouTube channel. This meeting is being audio and video recorded and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district website. We thank you for joining us and ask for your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of social distancing and other restrictions. At this moment, please stand for the virtual presentation of the colors by the Casa Robla Fundamental High School Air Force Junior ROTC.
Color guard, attention, hut, hort, arms, forward, heart. Color guard, halt, ready, haste. Ready, haste, reason, horns. Ladies and gentlemen, may you please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms, ready, haste, forward, heart.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Paul Viascas, Board President. And to my right is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President. To his right is Ms. Pam Costa, Board Member. To my left is Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk. And to her left is Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Member. And Mr. Superintendent Kern and other staff are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comment for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a public comment online using the comment form located on the district website at www.sanjuan.edu/BoardMeeting. If you wish to submit a public comment on more than one agenda item, please submit a separate form for each item on which you are commenting. Comments received by 6:00 PM today have already been shared with all board members. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time that agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the raise your hand feature. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 1,500 characters. We are now at item D, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes at this time? Seeing and hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for April 27? It's been moved by Ms. Creason and seconded by Dr. McKibben. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous. We are at item E1, Classified School Employee Week. Mr. O'Orpalo.
Good evening, President Viascas, Board Members, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation that the governing board adopt Resolution A405, proclaiming May 16 through the 22nd, 2021 as Classified School Employee Week. Our classified school employees are being recognized for the dedication and outstanding work that they perform on behalf of our students, staff, and our community. And I am pleased tonight to be joined by Karen Smith via Zoom, the President of the California State Employees Association, Chapter 127, here to accept the resolution and to thank the board.
President Viascas, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. On behalf of the California School Employees Association, I would like to start out by thanking all of the San Juan Unified's essential classified employees, our account clerks, family services technicians, administrative assistants, attendance technicians, bilingual translators, brailleists, budget technicians, campus monitors, campus representatives, carpenters, CDAs, clerks, college and career techs, communication specialists, community safety specialists, custodial staff, electricians, ground maintenance workers, health assistants, heavy equipment operators, heating and air conditioning techs, plumbers, carpenters, low voltage technicians, pool technicians, all instructional assistants, bilingual instructional assistants, ICTs, irrigation technicians, locksmiths, low voltage techs, work order technicians, media techs, plumbers, records and reports technicians, parent liaisons, nutrition service workers, school community workers, secretaries, senior personnel clerks, senior programmer analysis, assigned language interpreters, SIS support desk specialists, desktop support specialists, networking specialists, speech and language pathologists, social emotional support specialists, senior records and reports clerks, warehouse and delivery workers, welders, youth and adult employment techs, fiscal techs, controllers, telecom techs, painters, payroll technicians, CODAs, occupational therapists, and our front desk receptionists. If I missed anybody, I apologize. Without all of you, our students would have not received the services they needed throughout the past year during this pandemic. While some staff got to stay in the safety of their homes, most classified staff have been on the front lines at the school sites servicing our students' families and other staff members throughout this whole pandemic. Some classified workers doing jobs they have never performed before without any training. It's clearly evident that classified workers are here for the students. San Juan classified staff are educational heroes. The San Juan School Employees Association would like to take this moment to celebrate classified staff employees. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Karen. Do any board members have comments or questions at this time? Ms. Creason?
No question, but I just want to encourage people that are listening to really go the extra mile in this week to thank our team members that have done so much. I posted on social media, the same thing for Teachers Week, and that goes for classified too. A little love goes a whole long way. So even if it's just writing a nice note to a team member at your school that you have great interactions with, maybe a candy bar, maybe just kind words, really just be thoughtful. I really encourage all of us to be thoughtful. Think about the entire team at our school sites that do so much every year, but really, really went through it this year. And thank you, thank you, thank you for all of our CSA members.
Thank you, Ms. Creason, and I also, sorry, that's okay. We'll do the we'll do the kind of official adoption of the resolution and then a round of applause. But first, I also wanted to add a few comments. I just wanted to echo my my thanks. The last couple days, I've been able to really engage and do some site visits. And there was one site in particular that just really called out, you know, them doing a full staff appreciation and making sure they were doing everything possible to make sure that their classified employees were included because for the most part of the long, long list that Karen just itemized, most of our team members have played more than one hat throughout this season and really have done and juggled so many things to to make sure that our students get the services they need. So I also just want to express my appreciation as well and say thank you to all of our classified employees. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number A405 proclaiming the week of May 16 through the 22nd as Classified School Employee Week? It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Dr. McKibben. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, thank you. That was unanimous, just in case anyone missed it. And with that, we are at item E2, High School Student Council Reports. Tonight, we get to hear from our student representatives from Casa Robla Fundamental High School and San Juan High School. So welcome, and let's begin with Kaylee Gibbs from Casa Robla.
Good evening, Paul Viascas, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. I am Kaylee Gibbs from Casa Robla High School. In our SCORE program, six of Casa Robla SCORE Health Academy students who took the National Certified Medical Assistant Exam in April received certification. This certification demonstrates to employers, colleagues, patients, and the public at large that these students have the administrative and clinical knowledge and proficiency required of the medical assistant professional. Casa Robla is very proud of this high achievement and looks forward to what these students do next. They have inspired and encouraged their peers who are taking the test this May. And our ROTC program, William Kersey, was recently honored as the California winner and the Sons of American Revolution Enhancement Award. He will move on to the national competition this summer. Another update resides in our Avid program. Twenty-three seniors were honored at their Avid graduation. Casa Robla Live, or CRL, is another club at CASAB. Senior Kyle Miller won the Saba Creative Expression Award for his video, "Living Brought Me Home." In addition, he won the honors for Best Photographer slash Videographer in the Best at Orangeville Competition. For our athletics program, football won league title in a nail biter against Pioneer. Cross country swept in both girls and league titles. For golf, Logan Shanks made GEL All League. Swim, Gray Shore and Madison Andrews both broke school records. Grace was also MVP for the GEL, and Madison earned GEL All League. Season due sports are off to a great start as well. Boys basketball won their first league game in five years. School renovations. Our stadium is now open and looking amazing with new facilities and freshly painted benches that show off our Ram pride. We are excited to host an in-person graduation year. Graduation this year. Our seniors and families are so excited as well. Student updates. The return to campus four days a week makes the day feel somewhat normal. It is great to see so many people in person. Personally, this enhances my learning experience and overall my high school experience. Me and many others are so grateful for the schedule change. Award ceremonies. For Term Three, 216 students received Principal Honors Award. Two hundred and four students received High Honors. One hundred and forty-seven students received honors. And 232 students received perfect attendance. One hundred and sixty students received Renaissance Awards under one of the four categories. We were so lucky to have Taco Bell and Dairy Queen donate gift cards. Upcoming events. We are super excited that we can host summer school this year and offer some electives that are not normally offered. We are really, we really hope this can continue in the years to come. Thank you so much for your time. Take good care of yourself. Be kind to one another and go Rams.
Thank you, Kaylee, very much for joining us and for your report. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments at this time? Dr. McKibben?
Kaylee, what are your plans for the summer and next year?
Um, one of my favorite things about high school is our athletics. So definitely next year, I'm planning on continuing in sports over the summer. I'm excited as more things open up that we're able to do more things as groups. Yeah, very excited for athletics next year.
Ms. Creason?
Thank you so much for your report, and it's so great to hear the reports now that we're back to four days. I mean, it's a little different, right? And the excitement is really inspiring. And I have to say that I'm really excited to hear about the certificates that are being earned. In my day job, I do a lot of work with pathways and stackable credentialing. And it's just wonderful that our district provides so many opportunities for that, and the medical pathway is so special. And it's really an industry that there's, there's, there's good jobs there, you know, good jobs with family supporting wages, benefits, dependable scheduling, you know, there's real money to be made there. So I'm really proud that there's a pathway to those kinds of jobs. And I'm so proud of your team, your school team for making, you know, for your achievement. So thanks for your report and wishing you the best for the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. And I also just want to say again, thank you for for joining us. And in addition to the National Certified Medical Exam, which is pretty exciting, I remember seeing that pop up on social media. Super impressive, but also just your long list of other impressive accomplishments of you and your peers there. It's really, really great to hear. I also just want to appreciate that you called out summer school. I think we're all pretty excited to be offering quite a bit around our summer school offerings. And so it sounds like you're ready to take advantage of that as well, which is very exciting. So thank you very much, Kaylee, for your report and for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. And next up, we will hear from Jose Farfan from San Juan. And Jose, please correct me if I mispronounced your name and begin when you are ready, if you're with us.
You did say that right. Give me one second to load it up really fast. You can see me? Cool.
We can see you. Good to see you.
All right. Thank you, guys, for having me on here. My name is Jose Farfan of San Juan High School, graduating in class of 2021. I would like to thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to talk about my experiences over the last two years. I'm really honored to be here. I wanted to be the last representative to San Juan to discuss our transition periods from going from Zoom to hybrid to in-person. This experience personally took a toll on myself, especially like with all the switches happening so fast and like everything just being so off basically. But honestly, I could see our perseverance from to the roof. So, yeah. Since the school year began, we have all been optimistic about coming back. However, the setbacks that we were told about going to hybrid, going into in-person learning and getting told we were in the red for COVID cases, it diminished our optimism. So our senior year was truly a roller coaster of emotions, but we definitely persevered through. We just had Avid graduation. It was amazing. It was one of the best experiences I ever had. And honestly, that just made me look forward to our actual graduation coming soon. It was this next month. So I'm really excited for that, especially since we haven't been able to have so many senior activities. But, yeah. So, yeah, the, the sorry, I haven't done this in a while. I'm so sorry, COVID.
No worries. You did a good job.
So, yeah. When we first got into hybrid, it was two days a week, like two hours a week, and it was two cohorts. It didn't feel the same, obviously. It was definitely a step in the right direction, but it just didn't feel the same. It was one of the most awkward experiences to me. And honestly, it was still something, though. I would take it over anything, especially having like only going through online, online learning, distance learning. And we could see why students were struggling because some students, they wouldn't have the like they would be shy to like talk about a question or like go through anything like that with the teachers. So going back into in-person, it was definitely a jump. And I'm happy that our students did come back and we're trying our hardest to get through this school year. Going into, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Going into, going into, like, like all back four days, four-day schools, that that was honestly the highlight of the school year. It was one of the best experiences as well. It truly felt like we were actually like back to normal in a way, besides the face mask. So it was, it was great. We didn't get to have that many sports, sadly. Our soccer was going to have a season, but we pulled out last minute because a lot of the teams didn't have didn't have a team. So that was sad. I think football had a couple scrimmages, so that was good. Softball took off. Softball took off good, real softball. And, yeah. I'm happy to be at San Juan. It's been a pleasure being there for four years. So, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jose, for joining us. Do any board members have questions or comments at this time? Ms. Creason?
Okay, so I have to first just acknowledge the awesomeness of your POC zoo, placeholder. So I appreciate that so much. You know, I want to call out what you said about the perseverance and really I appreciate you lifting that up and that recognition in yourself and in your, I want to say coworkers, kind of.
Yeah, my peers, yeah.
You have, right? You have persevered. The resilience is inspiring what you all have been able to work through and still stay as positive as you can be, not to minimize the struggle because I recognize that there is struggle. But, you know, it really, it really touched my heart to hear you say that. And I hope others around you really lift themselves up in knowing, hey, I was able to get through something really, really hard, you know? It's huge. It's a big deal. So.
Definitely like the hardest experience so far. I'm going to college soon, so maybe I'll have some more. But this is definitely like this distance learning, it took a toll. But I'm so happy, like my peers got through it and like I've talked, I talked to them about like grades and stuff. And like they could definitely say going back to distance, like, or no, going back to in-person, they're great to have gone so, so, so. So that's just, it's amazing here.
It's interesting what showing up can do. For what's going on at my home. I have a kid too. He's in eighth grade, and that's really me talking about what I see at home. You know, him being able to go really did motivate him, right? You know, just being able to be around people too, you know? So, no, I hear that. And you're awesome, you and your peers. I also want to say I was at Avid graduation and I was very inspired for multiple reasons. It was nice to just see humans again. Kind of forgot. But it was wonderful to see all the young folks. And I don't know if you noticed that I did bring my son to that who is in Avid now, who wasn't going to take Avid next year, but after the ceremony made the decision, he's going to stick with it. So he's really excited to get his sash one day too and be like all the big kids. He didn't say that, but I'm saying that. So know that you're inspiring the young folks. So just appreciate all you do and keep your head up, okay?
Thank you so much.
Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you, Jose. Appreciate your, your, your comments. And I too look forward to your graduation as I will be at your high school. So I'm looking forward to that. And I got to tell you that we all attended that Avid graduation. And me personally, the speakers were all outstanding, but for me, the highlight was the young female from San Juan. And she really, she touched me. She really did. I was so impressed with her so much that I even been in contact with your principal because she mentioned that she was, she had been accepted to several universities, but she did not mention where she was going to go. I reached out to your principal to ask because I was really curious. And, and he emailed me back that she's going to be attending UCLA. And I'm just so impressed with her and all of you at San Juan. And yes, just thank you for your report. And if you see her, tell her that I was very, very moved for her speech. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
We were all very excited to attend. There was a full complement of the board. I think all of us were gonna do everything possible to get there because it was a first in-person, you know, ceremony and recognition of our seniors. So we're very proud of you. I think you might have mentioned it and maybe I missed it, but what are your plans next year? Where are you going and what would you like to study?
So I made the tough decision. That was between, it was San Jose State, San Francisco, and Sac State. But I just, I came to the conclusion Sac State is the move because it's just, I love Sacramento. It's my hometown. I just want to be here. I know I might regret it, but like I really love it here. I love the environment. I like the campus way more than San Francisco. So I just want to stay here. I got accepted for kinesiology. One day I want to be like a physical therapist or be involved with sports medicine. If not business, I'm really into business. So, yeah.
Awesome. Well, best of luck, and we look forward to seeing you in action. Awesome. Well, best of luck and we look forward to seeing you in action. And I'm glad you're sticking around here at home.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee and Jose for joining us for the evening. Student voice is very important to the board and it's typically our favorite part of the meeting. So we're glad you could make it and join us. You're certainly welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but you're also welcome at this time to carry on with all of your other busy, busy activities. We are now at items E three through E six. Mr. Allen, do we have any reports from staff, board appointed district committees, employee organizations or other district organizations?
I do have Michael Tucker with the facilities committee down for a report.
Excellent. Mr. Tucker, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you. Good evening, President Velazquez, board members, Superintendent Kern and staff, Michael Tucker, your chair for the district's facilities committee. Want to provide you with a brief update regarding the committee's activities since my last appearance before you. On April 6th, the committee received a report from the Fair Oaks Recreation and Parks District regarding the playing fields located at La Vista. The report detailed the improvements proposed for the park just adjacent to La Vista's campus, which included an emphasis on girls' softball fields with an additional playground equipment and renovated restrooms and a snack bar, among other proposed improvements. Speaking specifically as your chair, the project appears to present a unique opportunity for partnership between these two public agencies to better serve San Juan students and the local La Vista community. Additionally, the focus on girls' athletics could potentially advance equity in facilities between boys and girls athletics. Ultimately, the committee unanimously voted to recommend consideration of the project by the board. At the committee's May 4th meeting, the committee received a report from Encina's interim principal, Ms. Shayna Henry, regarding the potential renaming of the Encina campus. Ms. Henry reviewed the process, including calling for submissions, input from appropriate enrollment stakeholders and community members, and review based on San Juan's criteria for a school name. Ms. Henry shared that at the conclusion of the process, the name Catherine Johnson was selected. Speaking individually as your chair, it was clear from Ms. Henry's presentation that input that Ms. Johnson's career as a successful and stereotype defining mathematician is embodied by the work being done by the students on campus. As a result, the committee voted unanimously to advance Catherine Johnson to the board as a proposed name for Encina's middle school. In conclusion, I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to be here to discuss the committee's work. I also want to thank Mr. Camarda for, and his staff for their excellent guidance and assistance with the committee's work. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Are there any questions? Ms. Creason.
Not a question, but I know we probably will not see you again for the rest of this school year. So just want to express my appreciation. I know it was a hard go for you and your committee too, working through pandemic and, you know, doing all the things that you have to do and sticking with this volunteer gig to help advise us as a board. So just appreciate you and thanks for hanging in there with us.
Well, thank you so much for saying that. And honestly, it's, it's been a pleasure to be a part of the community. And again, you know, Mr. Camarda and his staff have made it pretty easy to contribute.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, for your report. I don't see any other questions at this time, so we appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you.
And at this time, seeing, I'll just do one more quick check, Mr. Allen, but I don't see any other individuals wishing to speak for items E three through E six.
That is correct.
Okay, with that, we are at item E seven, and there are no closed session actions to report at this time. So we are then at item F, visitor comments. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time?
Certainly, President Velazquez. This item is an opportunity for those individuals attending the meeting to offer comment on topics that are not on tonight's agenda. If your comment is related to an item on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you hold your comment until that item is called and public comment will be offered at that time. If you'd like to offer a comment on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda and have joined us on the Zoom environment, now would be the time to raise your hand. To do so, click the raise hand button found at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device or your desktop Zoom client, or press star nine if you've dialed into the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we have any visitor comments at this time?
We do have three hands that are raised at this time.
Okay, I'd like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen will count down your time and under the Ralph and Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who will follow up with you. And at this time, Mr. Allen, I'll invite you to facilitate our public comment. Thank you.
Certainly, our first comment will be from Kristin Miller. Ms. Miller, when you're ready.
Good evening, board members. First and foremost, thank you for your time. I'm here today to introduce myself as a resource to the San Juan Unified School District community and would like to discuss ways I can support San Juan in the immediate future as well as over the next several years. My name is Kristin Miller. I am a longtime Sacramento-based educator and served in traditional education roles since 2006. I was predominantly a high school math teacher, but also taught avid and career technical education, developed courses and pathways and took on increasing leadership responsibilities before taking an assistant principal position in 2017. During that time, I saw the transformative nature of restorative practices from a conflict resolution standpoint and made the decision to start an organization devoted to working directly with schools and districts, providing training, coaching, guidance and support in transformative social emotional learning to promote equity and social justice, restorative practices, trauma-informed practices and PBIS. I have spent my entire career implementing these practices and informally training my colleagues and have seen tremendous improvements in academic achievement, disciplinary infractions, as well as in school culture and climate. For the last three years, I've worked directly with schools and districts throughout California, providing training and follow-up coaching and support in these areas. The COVID pandemic has provided us with a tremendous opportunity to reimagine how we interact with our students and serve them and their families. I'd like to have the opportunity to work with San Juan Unified Staff, providing training and follow-up coaching and support to ensure we are doing justice for our students, schools and our community. I've put together a brief package of additional details and would love to follow up with you to discuss this further at a time and in a manner that works best for you. What would be the most efficient way of doing that?
And Ms. Miller, because this is public comment, the board can't respond, but I'd certainly be happy to reach out to you and follow up afterward via meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
And thank you for your comment. Our next comment will come from Mr. Ben Avi. Mr. Avi, when you're ready, sir.
Thank you, President Velazquez, members of the board. My name is Ben Avi and I'm speaking to you on behalf of the San Juan Parents Association tonight, calling in with strong support for the transition to by-district elections or neighborhood elections, specifically neighborhood elections with seven trustee districts within the San Juan Unified School District. As I shared last week, the San Juan Parents Association is a nonprofit organization that is bringing parents together to advocate for our children. And we're doing that through education, civic engagement and political action. So as we form our political action committee, we believe strongly that we should elect people that represent the geographic diversity of the district and represent all neighborhoods. And so for that reason, we strongly support neighborhood elections with seven trustee districts. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your comment, Mr. Avi. Our next comment will come from Mr. Rob Hutchinson. Mr. Hutchinson, when you are ready.
Good evening. Thank you. I can't seem to turn my video on. Good evening, Board President, members, Superintendent, Cabinet and others. My name is Rob Hutchinson. Although hundreds of kids, including the 150 plus that I've been missing for a few weeks now, call me Mr. H. I'm the guy who's usually pretty full, in the 150s, low 160s. I'm the guy who gives his cell phone number out to his kids. And I'm the guy who meets kids off-site for help as long as they'll drag the parent along. I'm currently on paid leave for the second time this year for complaining about ongoing illegal teaching and learning conditions at Rio North Cone High School. As a result of open enrollment, Rio's enrollment has gone up by almost 400 kids in the last four years. It's currently capped at 2,000, but may swell to 2,050 during the summer, we were told in the staff meeting. As a result, Rio's had to use several rooms, several spaces that were not designed or built to be gen ed rooms. I, for example, spent three and a half years in D 14, a 550 square foot room in which we have up to 39 people. That's greater population density than the Houston home with 90 smuggling victims last week. Sadly, it's been done in such a way that it's created a school within a school and not in a good way. I'm not sure how many, how many of the small rooms are used for gen ed. I really need to get my screen on, but we have rooms A, B and D. One, two, three, five, six and seven are all legal. Sixteen out of seventeen of the top math classes are taught there. There are another 20 rooms, at least a dozen being used illegally with the lowest.
And Mr. Hutchinson, I'm going to have to ask you to conclude your remarks, please.
Thank you. Ninety-four percent of the top math classes are in legally sized rooms. 100% of the math support classes.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Hutchinson. You'll have to come back to our next meeting or please send us your comments in writing. Thank you. Our next comment will come from Ms. Marina Gable. Ms. Gable, when you're ready.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, this is Marina Gable. I am making an announcement. We are ready to start collecting signatures for the recall of the San Juan Unified School Board. We have 160 days, people. So please check out our new Facebook page, Recall San Juan Unified School Board. If you have any questions on the recall, please contact us at recall sjusb@gmail.com. Again, Facebook page, Recall San Juan Unified School Board. And if you have any questions, please contact us at recall sjusb@gmail.com. We will also have a website link so you can download petitions at home. And there will be instructions as well on how to collect signatures correctly. If any of you collected signatures for Newsom, it's exactly the same. We will have a P O box address where you can mail the completed petitions to on the Facebook page as well as on the website. So again, if you have any questions, please email us at recall sjusb@gmail.com, all lowercase. And check out our Facebook page and go ahead and messenger us through there as well. And if you do get a chance, please check out the San Juan Parents Association. This is an incredible website, nonprofit organization. The parents really needed this and I thank everyone who put this together. And neighborhood elections is what's, what's key to make this, make this happen. So please, please check out Recall San Juan Unified School Board Facebook page. Join us in the fight to have your voice heard, parents. Now is the time. Let's get this done.
Ms. Gable, I'm tasked with you to conclude your comments. Thank you. Our next comment will come from Katie Reed. Ms. Reed, when you're ready.
Good evening, San Juan District Board. My name is Katie Reed. I am speaking in support of and consistent with Ben Avi's prior comment. San Juan has recently been promoting and the Equity Department's virtual leadership program to empower, educate, unify and ensure district-wide safe space for African-American students. Sadly, I think that the refusal to get neighborhood elections in place prior to the November 2020 elections did more damage to inclusion and supportive underserved students and families in our district than any virtual conference can improve. There was recently a complaint filed. Carolina Flores and Neighborhood Elections Now versus San Juan Unified School District in which statistics included massive increases in minority and underserved populations who voted in the November 2020 election. These were historic numbers and they were, were prevented from having a voice in district elections because of our district's failure to adopt the neighborhood election system timely. It needs to.
Ms. Reed, it seems you cut out at the very end there. Was that the end of your remarks?
Yes, that was the end.
Great. Thank you. Our final comment will come from Leslie Cottrell. When you're ready.
Just two sides of my screen. That was an accident. I apologize.
No problem. It happens. And President Velazquez, that does conclude our public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, and thank you for those who joined us this evening. With that, we are at item G, the consent calendar. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments for items that are on the consent calendar?
If you've joined us on the Zoom meeting tonight, we'd like to offer a comment on an item that is on the consent calendar. Those are items G one through G 12. Now would be your opportunity to do so by clicking that raise hand button. We've had no written comments submitted, nor do we have any hands raised at this time, President Velazquez.
Okay. I am going to be pulling item G 12 at this time. Do any board members wish to remove any other items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve items G one through G 11? It's been moved by Dr. McKibben. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye, aye. That was unanimous. And for item G 12, which was pulled, Mr. Camarda, welcome.
Yes, good evening and thank you, President Velazquez and board members. Superintendent Kern, I apologize for G 12. The backup material for this resolution is correct, but unfortunately, the board cover sheet is incorrect. I need to have the board pull this item completely off the agenda, correct the board cover sheet and bring it back to the May 25th meeting. Again, I apologize to this board for the inconvenience and we'll have that corrected on May 25th.
Okay, it has been pulled and we will see it on May 25th. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Board President.
With that, we are at item I one, Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan. Ms. Bassinelli and team.
Good evening, President Velazquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight, the Division of Teaching and Learning, myself and the team included, were excited to share with you the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan.
Ms. Bassinelli, do you mind just adjusting your microphone just a little bit?
A little closer there. Is that good?
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for letting me know. In March, Assembly Bill 86 was signed into law and it allocated $4.6 billion towards local education agencies to implement expanded learning opportunities in their system. And what this means for San Juan is approximately $27 million in funding. Of this funding, at least 85% must go towards providing in-person services and at least 10% must go towards hiring paraprofessionals. This funding is very specific in that it's to provide supplemental instruction, supports for social emotional well-being and also meals for targeted students. And you can see the targeted students in the blue box to the right of the screen. And what you'll see in those targeted students is that there is some overlap between students that are called out as a part of our LCFF supplemental funds. And there's also the expansion to include additional students such as students who are disengaged, students who are at risk of abuse, neglect or exploitation. And this is identified specifically in writing from a legal, medical or social. students who are at risk of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, and this is identified specifically in writing from a legal, medical, or social service agency or an emergency shelter. In addition, it expands to students who are behind grade level and students with disabilities. The deadline to submit this plan is June first, and the funding is available for us through August thirty-first, or thirty-first of next year. Some key terms that I just wanted to highlight was the use of supplemental instruction, and this is really specific to instruction beyond what's provided in the regular program. So it's in addition and complementary to our regular instructional program. This includes services provided in accordance to A E Ps. And the support is also very specific in that it's supplementary, and it's beyond the supports that we provide as a part of our regular program. And it includes supports that are focused on behavioral, social, emotional, or other integrated supports in order to help a student access the instructional program. There are seven planned requirements that were identified in this legislation, and I just wanna, I wanna give you the, an overview, a broad overview of the seven. So starting from the left on the screen with extending instructional time, this is really looking at increasing the number of days or minutes beyond the regular instructional day. It can also include summer school or intercession. The accelerating progress to close learning gaps, this is focused on the implementation, expansion, or enhancement of learning support, so it can include things such as tutoring, programs focused on language development, materials, and educator training. Integrated student supports to address barriers to learning, this includes health, counseling, mental health services, meals, before and after-school programs, social emotional learning, and also referral services. Community learning hubs are focused on providing students with access to technology, high-speed internet, and academic supports. Supports for credit-deficient students really focuses on supporting students to complete graduation or grade-level promotion requirements, and it also includes increasing or improving college eligibility. Additional academic services for students, this includes diagnostic, progress monitoring, or benchmark assessments of student learning. And then lastly, to the right, training for school staff on strategies. This is specific in terms of trauma-informed practices and how to engage students and families in addressing students' social emotional health and their academic needs. So in the development of this plan, it asks for stakeholder input. And as a part of our continuous improvement process that we have currently in our system, we've done a lot of listening and learning along the way, specific to the LCAP development, but then also to help shape our responses to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So what you see right here is the culmination of listening and learning that's happened, transpired over the year. It includes a variety of groups. In addition to the LCAP development stakeholder engagement that we did, we also pushed out a district-wide thought exchange survey, which you have in your packet. We met with the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee, and we also talked with our labor groups. Student Voice has made up at least half of the input gathered as a part of our LCAP development process. In talking with the groups, we asked them three specific questions. One was, what helped you learn? What's made you feel connected in school? And then, what are the supports that you need over the summer? And there were some themes that arrived through this process. One was the importance of peer interaction and connectedness. Another was mental health supports. Students really requesting real-world skills, but also knowing that they need access to credit recovery and other academic supports. And then also asking for fun and engaging experiences. As I mentioned, we had pushed out a thought exchange, and we did this the week of April twenty-sixth. And we asked what types of enrichment and recovery instructional programs should be offered next school year and over the summer to help make up for any lost learning during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we had a little over sixteen hundred participants with over two thousand thoughts and with forty-eight thousand readings. And some trends, and of this, we, the majority of the respondents were parents, with seventy-nine percent of parents being responders, seventeen percent of employees, and then we had students in other groups. Key thoughts that emerged was the idea of reducing class size or having smaller class sizes with increased classified staff. Also intervention teachers and staff, free tutoring, and the request for enrichment programs. As I mentioned, we talked to several employee groups, such as our principals, our teachers association, our classified association, as well as teaching and learning staff. And this is an example of a jam board that was collected during one of our meetings with our stakeholders. And the themes that we had heard through with these stakeholders was the need for more supports in the classroom, and also the request for flexibility and autonomy, meaning local control at the school level in order for them to really shape and respond to student need. And the need to balance academic and social emotional support. So in looking at all this input, key themes emerged, and that was to differentiate academic and social emotional supports, really recognizing that it's challenging for a one-size-fits-all model, particularly in a system of our size, and the need for sites to be able to shape responses to what student needs are. Additionally, increasing mental health supports, as well as credit recovery options, as well as being intentional about fostering peer interactions and mentoring and community building. We heard that from our high school students tonight, and that is a trend across our students, is that need to build community with each other. And then also providing engaging, fun, real-world experiences and opportunities. So the plan that we brought before you, ELO, as I, as I mentioned, it has a finite funding, and that is through August thirty-first of next year. And so what we did is we realized that we need to build not just a one-year plan, we need a multi-year plan to respond to the needs. And so what we've done is we've matched ELO with other one-time funds, such as ESER, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, as well as some other funds for actions that were already budgeted to create a comprehensive plan that is at minimum two years, and some of the, some of the actions, as you note in the plan, are allocated for three years. So looking at this more closely, you can see the marriage of the ELO funds with the ESER funds, and with ESER funds, they, there's a little bit, although they're one-time monies, they're spanned over a longer period of time. So with some of the monies that we're receiving, they will be able to be utilized up until September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. And the combination of these two funds are really allowing us to be creative and add these supplementary and support services to really determine what's working and what's not. So digging into the plan, as a team, collecting the input and working together around what we currently have and where we can expand and build upon, we, we identified actions in each of the, the four strategy areas. And I, or, I'm sorry, the seven strategy areas that I talked about. And what I didn't mention on the previous slide is with the ELO funding requirements, we can write a plan to one of those strategies, such as extending the instructional time, or we can write a plan to all seven. It's really up to the district to decide where the needs are and to write the plan according to where the needs are. So in terms of extending the instructional time, we really focused on two buckets. One is expanding summer programs. So for example, our Camp Invention Program has expanded. Currently, we're at twelve hundred students that are enrolled, with more still continuing to enroll. Our middle school high interest courses, this is something that's new. It's a piece of our enrichment offerings, and it's still in development, but what we have right now are proposals for plans that include courses such as financial literacy, writing enrichment, science labs, Pixar in a Box, which you can guess it has to do with movie making, sounds fun, sports camps, ethnic studies, and industrial technology. There's other summer school offerings that are included in this section of the plan, but I want to jump over to the next bucket, which is really the implement before, during, and after-school programs. So inside of this piece, we identified it as a three-year action, and it's an opportunity for sites to build strategies to respond to the social emotional or the academic needs at their site, either through before-school programs, during-the-day programs, or after-school programs. So it could include things such as tutoring, specific skill area around academics, but it also could be something such as intramural sports during the day, like during recess time. So it's very broad, and this is an area where we wanted to provide opportunity for sites to be responsive to what their unique needs are and build a plan around that. The next strategy that we focused on was accelerating progress to close gaps. And so inside of this, there are four big buckets. And one is to pilot a flexible schedule at the, at middle schools and high schools. And so this is a pilot opportunity for secondary schools to rework their schedule, to build in a thirty-minute flexible period that would allow them to provide intervention, enrichment, and social emotional supports for students based off of their needs. And so this would be a pilot opportunity. This is optional, so schools would go through a process together to decide if they were going to engage in this. But this provision allows for any middle and high that wants to engage in this work to, to engage in that. The next bucket is extending, expanding instructional supports in classrooms. So we've heard from every single group the need to expand supports inside of our classrooms. So what you'll see in the plan is that we allocated certificated staff at every, we allocated one F T E at every school. In addition, and so that's elementary through high school, to support the academic needs of students. In addition, we also allocated an additional F T E at our high schools in support of I M one, and that's Integrated Math One. And this was really to help schools go a little deeper in their provision. They may provide small group instruction with that, they may reduce class size with that, they may also provide co-teaching as a part of that. So leaving it, providing the F T E, but leaving flexibility at the site level for them to determine implementation. The next piece of support inside of this that we focused on expanding was the transitional kindergarten through second-grade instructional assistance support. So we built into the plan, again, every, the certificated staff, the instructional staff, the instructional assistant staff, and the bilingual staff that I'll talk about next, that's all a part of a three-year plan. So with the instructional assistants, the vision is that we would allocate an F T E, one, one person, one instructional assistant per, per, per grade level, TKK through second grade. And we would build out, once we have staffed our schools with one per grade level, once we're able to hire, because this is going to be a push area in terms of finding the workforce to do this, we will expand to, our ultimate goal is to provide one per classroom. For the bilingual instructional assistants and the cultural brokers, our intention is to expand their hours and also expand staffing. And then also expanding instructional assistants serving students with disabilities, expanding their hours and staffing. A new piece is providing tutoring services. And so this is a concept that we would like to start in San Juan, which is our virtual tutoring program. We'd like to utilize our instructional assistants, providing them with two extra hours beyond a day, so it would be an eight-hour day, so that they could help provide tutoring and assistance to students after school. So inside of this, we would utilize instructional assistants, students, as well as college tutors to provide this service and provide them with the professional development and technology tools that they need. And then the last piece on this slide is the Expanding the School Partnerships Project. So this is a new endeavor that we just started piloting, and we started it for this summer program. And what this is, is this is an opportunity for sites to build projects, to build programs in support of students, either their academic needs or their social emotional needs. And the key behind this is partnerships, really in partnership with the community, in partnership with labor, in partnership with the parents. And so, so far, we have connected, we, we have at least forty-five hundred more students that are going to be served through partnership projects. We had a hundred applications from a variety of school sites, some school sites with more than just one application. And some of the projects that they're going to be providing over the summer are pretty exciting. There's reading and writing intervention and math intervention, which of course is going to occur. But there's also coding camps, speech and debate camp, writing enrichment, introduction to forensic psychology, broadcasting, theater, STEAM and science, as well as transition camps. And some of the partners that have been engaged in this work, they include our Parks and Recreation Departments, our local agencies, as well as F E Yaw Nature Center, the Aerospace Museum, the B Street Theater, Sacramento Area Youth Speaks, COVARS, and Mad Science, I could, I could go on. But you kind of get an idea of the breadth of partners that have been involved in, in this project. So in this, in this section, what we did is we expanded the opportunity beyond summer, recognizing that we have schools that are going to want to continue these partnerships throughout the year. So this will enable them to develop their plan to stretch it out through the year, and this is also a part of the multi-year plan. The, the next strategy that we focused on was the integrated supports to address other barriers. And so we built in opportunities for expanding social emotional, mental health supports, as well as transitional supports for students, mentoring opportunities, and then expanded opportunities for student voice and mentoring. And so in, in this, there are multi-year actions, three-year actions that are identified with our mental health therapists, our interns, as well as social emotional staffing at support centers, and our social emotional support technicians, really focusing on expanding staff over the past, over the next three years, so that we can support students more intentionally. In addition, we also built in, we've had success with our Carisolus work, our partnership there, and so this is a continuous piece with the Carisolus for the next three years. With transitional support, we are offering our, our usual Camp Kinder summer school offering, but we also know that transitions, transitional support is important for our kindergarten to first-grade students who haven't spent a lot of time in our buildings this year. And so we are, we're actually expanded the Camp Kinder concept to be a K one boost, summer boost, and there are about six hundred seats for students to fill in that program. And then at the middle school levels, so with the transitional support, again, going back to the relational work that we know that we need to do in our school communities, they will be expanding the Where Everyone Belongs program there. Community learning hubs, this was a huge, this was a great opportunity to build on a seed idea that was presented to the board a few months ago, and that was the Weston Support and Technology Program. So in here, we wrote in for the expansion of this to really help support them in their community building and providing academic supports. And our supports for credit-deficient students, we expanded many of our summer credit recovery options. I want to talk about the site-based credit recovery, because that is a seat-based opportunity for students to attend summer school. Traditionally, in our scaled-back model, that has been only at one high school. This year, it's at every high school, so there is an opportunity at every high school for students to participate in in-person learning. Currently, we have nearly two thousand students enrolled in session one alone across our schools. Additionally, we also expanded our district-wide Apex license. And so this summer, we also saw an expansion of the, of participation in this, which is the online credit recovery option. And so we have seen an increase in that as well. And then in terms of improving college eligibility, we really looked at our, our partners that we currently have to see how we can expand that and provide more supports for students in preparing them for college, such as, for example, with the U Can Partnership, we're providing a one-week summer bridge program that helps students put together their portfolios in anticipation for future. we're providing a one-week summer bridge program that helps students put together their portfolios in anticipation for future events. With additional academic services, this is, again, this is, this piece is focused on the Diagnostic Progress Monitoring Assessment System. And so we have had a lot of success utilizing iReady and iExcel in our system. We added the intervention component as a district to help us build personalized instruction and lessons based using the assessment piece that is already in iReady and iExcel that we're using. So this piece of the plan helps us continue that work, continue the intervention and that personalized learning piece as a part of what we offer for students. And then the last strategy that we have in the plan is really training for school staff. And so there's a lot in here. The first one is the 18 hours of optional professional learning for certificated staff. This is focused on trauma-informed instruction, social-emotional learning, and instructional strategies. We layered in 18 hours of optional professional development for our classified members who are in direct supports of students. So this is a great opportunity, so for the TK through two instructional assistants, for our BIAs, for any staff member that is in direct service of students, we intend to provide them a fairly robust training that really focuses on reading instruction, math instruction, helps build their, their tools and their toolkit, and meeting the needs of our students. And then layered on top of that is an additional 12 hours of optional professional learning for all other staff. And so, for example, a, a classified member who is in direct service of students, they could take advantage of the 18 hours, but they could also take advantage of these other 12 hours, which will be focused on areas within the eight-point commitment for educational justice. So building this plan, we were really intentional of trying to balance the funding intent with local control. And, and in this context, the local control is really down at the school level. So we identified and allocated centrally some instructional supports, as well as social-emotional supports. These come in the form of site allocations that I've talked about, increased supports, and increased staffing. With some of these items, we're providing schools with process and parameters so that they can focus the supports on targeted students, that they can implement these actions across three years, that these supports are supplemental, they're in addition to the program, and they're not supplanting what we're currently offering, and that they prioritize direct service for students. So we want to build capacity in our schools so that they're responsive, flexible, and they're able to differentiate, knowing that they know the needs of their students best. So how do these actions track on with our LCAP focus areas? In this slide, you can kind of see the organization of where the actions fall within each of our four focus areas. It's our goal that this multi-year plan gives us an opportunity over time to implement the actions and measure impact, to inform future actions and thinking related to the LCAP. It is possible that over time, there are some actions that we listed in here as finite, because they are a part of a one-time funding opportunity. But they may be items that we are prioritizing as a system, because they are so impactful, and we need to build those into a multi-year plan such as the LCAP. So having a plan that spans two to three years helps give us that opportunity, because as you know, we're bringing the LCAP to you in a future item next month. And so the timing of this will flow together, where we can really kind of measure impact and assess where we need to go next. So our next steps, we have a big, huge lift, so this has been a very swift timeline for preparing the plan. And so as we've been talking, there still have been some minor revisions to the plan based off conversation that has just occurred since we have published the plan with the board. So we recognize there might be some minor revisions that come back to you on May 25th for consideration. We, but we're still, this is still very fluid. We also intend to develop and implement a recruitment and a hiring plan for all of these supplemental and support provisions. This is, that's probably going to be our biggest lift, is really getting the workforce in. And then we are in discussions with staff and partners, and really developing those parameters that I talked about for the site, at the site level, for that local control and implementation of the action. And then we're going to continue with our continuous improvement efforts and monitoring implementation of actions. And so with that, we are here, the, the Division of Teaching and Learning Leaders are here, they were co-creators in the plan, and so we're here to support you in any discussion or questions you have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bassinelli. Before we turn it to board comments and questions and discussion, Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do have one hand raised at this time, and I would remind those who have joined us on Zoom, if you'd like to offer a comment on this specific item, now's your chance to do so by clicking that raise hand button, and we can begin when you're ready, President Vasquez.
Sure, and friendly reminder that comments are limited to two minutes, please begin when you are ready.
Our first comment comes from Sonia Lopez, when you're ready.
Ms. Lopez?
I do see that you've unmuted, but we do not hear you.
Ms. Lopez, we still can't hear you if, if you're with us.
And Ms. Lopez has put her hand down.
Okay, thank you, and just as a reminder, we will go ahead and move to board comments and discussion, but there is another opportunity at the end of the meeting for visitor comments. So with that, I will turn it to my colleagues, any questions or comments at this time? Mr.? So a couple of them do my, kind of check the road, make sure. Ms. Costa will begin on this side, thank you.
What I really like about the, first of all, the magnitude of the plan is incredible. And how quickly it has evolved is incredible, and it's a definite statement about the work that has gone into this plan by our amazing staff. What I really like is that I see stakeholder feedback being utilized throughout the plan, both in groups that I have been a part of, listening to comments, in emails that I've received from various people, talking about things that were needed, and they are addressed in this plan. So I think that is really powerful. The multi-year approach using ESAR and other grant funds allows us really to have ongoing work rather than piecemeal kinds of things that it's one and done, and I like that. I think that as you look at the plan, there are services for all of our students. Students with high need, students who have been impacted by the pandemic. And I really believe that this will have a major impact on our students. I like the fact that the academic and social-emotional components are present. And I think it's really a piece that I didn't understand until I had a conversation with Mr. Kern, and that's the continuous improvement model, so that you're constantly looking to see what is the impact of the work, and do we want to continue this? Or is it really not making a difference? And I hope we will have regular feedback to the board as the process is going on next year, so that we hear the thinking as you're going to see what it is you'll want to continue and where we want to tweak things. So thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Creason?
Y'all been busy, that's a whole lot of stuff, and it's really exciting. I do have a couple of questions and just statements. First statement is, I'm hoping, and I'm sure there is, going to be opportunities for students and families to self-identify and not necessarily be selected for support. So folks could say, you know, I need help and not wait for that identification. Can you just confirm that that will be?
Absolutely, yeah.
Awesome, and then tutoring, I'm just wondering, well, two things. I, I heard the call out of the, the remote option, which I know that's going to provide more access. But at the same time, I'm wondering if there's going to be an in-person option as well.
We haven't determined it, but it is possible that we would do both.
It's not out.
It's not out of the equation.
Okay, and my only thought is, you know, it's been distance learning for so long, some people may just need that, that in-person support.
Ms. Creason, I, I would say as well, I think we've heard from students, I know, like in my SSAC, when I meet with them, they talk to that piece about how it's easier if I'm able to, school's over, I'm able to go, I'm able to connect. We're, that's, we have a lot of things in here that are aspirational, and I think we really hope to have in-person tutoring as part of that as well. And I, my guess is, we'll probably see it pop up in some places and others, and then even over the multi-year plan, there's an opportunity for us, as, as Ms. Bassinelli said, to learn from it and then replicate it in other areas.
That's wonderful. This is something I had thought about too, is, and this is kind of speaking to what Superintendent Kern just spoke to. If we are doing the in-person and it is tied to an after-school, you know, opportunity, if at all possible, that we provide food for these kids, you know, a snack or something, you know, after school. I know my kid comes home very, very hungry, you know, not only to just keep them nourished as they learn, but, you know, it might be an incentive for kids to come and get some more learning, especially if we provide good snacks. It incentivizes the heck out of me. Communicating the availability of support, so I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about, how are we going to let folks know? I mean, because there's a lot here, and I know that there's going to be some change, you know, school site to school site. So if you could talk a bit about how we're going to communicate all that.
So it's going to, it's going to vary depending on where the action is originating. And so, for example, the actions that are school-level, such as the partnership projects and the before, during, and after-school provisions that they build, that's going to be communicated at the site level through a variety of channels. We do, you know, our newsletters, all calls, teacher conferences, there's just a variety of tools. So it kind of depends based off of the program. For summer school, it's been very intentional in terms of the outreach and first targeting, making sure that we're outreach to the targeted groups for where the programs are primarily like focused on. And then from that, we have been expanding our outreach to include students from other schools, for example, that are still a part of targeted groups, expanding to reach, maybe you're not quite in a targeted group, but you are, you have need to, so expanding that. So it just, it's, it's hard to give a one-size-fits-all answer, because it really is varied depending on the program.
No, that makes a whole lot of sense, and I'm wondering if there can be some consideration, don't need an answer today, but of maybe an online hub, you know, of services, so folks can, maybe it can be searchable, that, you know, it's just a one-stop shop for people to say, I need support, but I don't know even where to start. That could help with, you know, their location and what kind of support and what grade, you know, just really make it real easy for folks. Because I could also see folks not recognizing or not engaging, for whatever reason, into, in support until a couple months down the line, right? And they kind of forgot everything that was communicated prior. So if that could be explored, I think that that might be really helpful.
So some kind of hub, such as like what we did with the family resources during the pandemic.
Yep.
I, I think one of the things we need to do, as you mentioned, Ms. Creason, is continue to put that at the forefront, because we did a lot of work around that hub for COVID, and some people knew about it, but others weren't. I do know that at the PAC meeting the other night, there was a question about this, and our lead counselor, Tracy Locke, posted a link already on there about a number of the summer programs that are there. So they've already started a focus around the summer programs that I think is just the starting point to provide really that hub. Kristen, do you want to speak anymore to that? Okay, so there's already a hub for summer school on the website.
I think that's fabulous, and just making sure that everyone knows that there's that link. Okay, I'm almost done, I'm sorry. It's important stuff.
Take all the time you need.
Local control, so I'm really excited, you know, one school site is one school site, so I'm happy that there is going to be that local control for, you know, things to be altered as they need to be by school site. But I'm wondering, is there going to be an opportunity for parents and students to provide input onto school site programming? Like, is there going to be any of, any advocacy opportunity?
So at the site level, they've been doing a lot of listening and learning along the way, so similar to what we've been doing all year in response to the pandemic, and then also for the LCAP, our schools have been doing that all along the way. So they're, they're going to need a fast turnaround because of the hiring that's going to need to happen as soon as possible and the plan development. But they already have a lot of input that they've been collecting from student groups as well as parents, and so they should be utilizing that as a part of their needs assessment to shape the plan. And then along the way, be getting feedback from students and parents and community regarding the implementation of the plan to help refine it. Because just, you know, our first go at a plan doesn't mean that it's set in stone for the next three years. We need to be adapting and refining it as we go. And so that, that is the expectation at our school level, but they do have some, they have pieces of input to start with.
Can, can I build off that too? And I think it's, you know, a lot of folks, and even as I've talked with others about this, are focused on this summer piece, and this is a small part, and I'm so appreciative of the fact that we've looked at this multi-year approach. Because for us to address what has taken place over this last year is not going to happen in two, four, six, eight weeks during the summer. And so I think, Ms. Creason, it really is going to be important, as we've implemented these things, to have opportunities for families to say, yeah, it's working this way, no, it's not. I mean, in some situations, we can modify, others we can't. But I even think there's an opportunity to almost have a focused conversation ongoing over the course of the year at the Superintendent's Parents Advisory Council, to have them like reach out each time. We're going to have a section for you to come back and report, what are you hearing about what we've implemented? So that at, at a high level, it's there as well. And Trent sent me a text after your last question, he said, Calm's team has talked about a hub, so it's on the roadmap, so just FYI.
Thank you, Trent, he's always on it. No, I think, I love that idea, and I recognize what you're saying, I mean, it's all happening so fast, and I know it needs to happen fast, because we need to get the supports to the kids fast, and you know, we're in this box that the state put us in. But at the same time, it's like, man, you know, there's a lot to consider, you know, there's a lot to consider, you know, to do it right. So I appreciate, you know, I, I hope none of this comes off as criticism at all, it's, I'm really excited about it, and I'm just, I just, I'm very much wanting to ensure that we're meeting everybody where they're at, and that we're including, we're engaging and getting input from folks that don't engage, you know, the folks that aren't part of the student advisory or the, you know, you know, the folks that we don't, we haven't talked to during the pandemic, because they're just not engaged in that way.
Yep.
And so I love that idea, Superintendent Kern, that there'll be the exploration of a feedback loop throughout, so that we can really meet folks where they're at.
And, and I don't think it comes off as critical at all, we need to, we need to be reflective and hear those types of things. So just appreciate that part of the conversation.
I think that's enough for me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben?
Over the years that I've been in education, which is about 50, I've written 17 grants, not as big as $111 million, but, but certainly. And, and I want to congratulate you on, and I've never had to write one as fast as you've had to write this one. And I just think it's absolutely remarkable what you've done in the time that you've had. But I also want to talk about three things that you've done better than I ever did in any, any one of those things, and why this makes these, this grant so powerful. One is that you really have paid attention to the concept of local control. Having individual grants that the schools, or for, I've been in three schools in the last three days, and they talked about the process that they had and so forth, and how validated they felt in terms of the confidence of the district in having these things very much in the hands of the individual schools. It's just outstanding. The second one is the level at which this process has spent listening to our partners. Partners being our teachers, partners being our students, partners being all of the 70 groups that, that we officially have partnerships with. And, and particularly seeing these partners as part of our talent pool, and drawing on them to say that in some ways, maybe that we had to kind of take a step back. And drawing on them to say that in some ways, maybe that we had to kind of take a step back and, and put it out there, put some of our ideas out there a second time. Freed us and, or freed you to think about things that, that give us an opportunity as a school district to be absolutely remarkable in how we take our students to represent those words that are behind us right here. And I, I say congratulations for that. Having said that, I'm going to ask a few questions. On slide 13. Can you help me understand, in terms of the providing of tutorial services and, and things like that, did you say, I, I lost where the 4,500 number came in? Was that the number of students that so far are?
So that was, that was not related to the tutoring services. That was related to the school partnership projects. So those are the part, those are the projects, like when you went out to the three schools.
Those are like, like
That's what they told you about.
B Street and things like that?
You got it.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I just, I just missed.
I gave a lot of info.
Another one, and, and this probably has more, is back to Superintendent Kern, as many others. One of the things we talked about a number of months ago that I wondered if it got lost, or it doesn't work, or it doesn't make sense anymore. But we talked about backpacks in this project. And I didn't see any of those kinds of things. And I thought, and I thought of this after, we, we had talked the other day. But we talked about backpacks with, and something's fairly dear to my heart. And that is the idea of having kids read during the summer. And, and wanted to know if anything ever happened in that one.
So some of these partnership projects, what they've written in their application is also the provision of materials needed for the program. So there are some programs that are including a variety of books for students to read. There are other programs that they're hooked into the Park and Recreation Department. And so they're providing the equipment students might need for the activity with the Park and Recreation Department. So we, I think, at one point, we were very aspirational. And we said, we want to buy, we want to get backpacks to help all students. But that may not be what they need specifically to engage in the learning. And I think that goes back to the local control and really letting, empowering our schools to identify what tools students need to engage in the learning that's ahead of them.
Okay, but it falls back into the local control issue and the schools deciding what they need.
Yep.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Going to slide 18. One of the things that, that, and I'm trying to make a connection between the professional development notion, particularly for instructional aides, and, and the other kinds of, the tutoring kinds of things and so forth. And one of the things that I think that I've learned mostly the hard way is that, that there, the training needs to be there before those different kinds of things, particularly with instructional aides. And, and even more so when we bring in students, whether it be high school students or college students and that sort of thing. How do you plan on, have you thought about the sequencing? In fact, of when that training happens? And, and, and obviously, I'm pushing, it needs to happen before the activities start, rather than, than when people are available.
Agreed. So it, it is our intention to provide training before the activities start. I think the challenge is going to be hiring the workforce in time for the training.
Yeah.
And so we might be training as we go. And, and some of the workforce might be already in positions and doing because of where the training, what the training calendar is. So we're going to have to train fast and early, but we're going to also have to provide training opportunities throughout the entire year because we're going to be hiring this workforce for months ahead.
Okay.
And yes, we, we have thought about the timing of it, but that's kind of the next step, once we have the discussion with the board about the plan.
Okay. On page 17 of, of the item, you talked there under, I believe it was number one, or, or one of them, related to camp intervention. And one of the things that I noticed, and this is a little bit territorial, I recognize, but on the camp intervention, there were no opportunities, and this looks like it's a very important, but there were no opportunities east of Grand Oaks and Kingswood. Would the, and, and that means that it would be many miles for the, the people to go to one of those if those were as far east as it goes. Are those things, things already decided? Or will there be opportunities for people within their, their local controlled grants to send people to camp intervention if they happen to live on the east side of the district?
So for Camp Intervention, because it's title funded, we're, we, we have to host it at Title I schools. So that would be why you're not seeing it hosted out of site beyond.
There are schools on the east side that have lots of Title I people.
So.
For example, Ottoman.
Correct. And so the outreach that has been occurring has been to targeted students at non-Title I schools so that they can attend at Camp Intervention at the host sites. It's, this piece is, what's tricky is, we, we've built in our regular budget to utilize Title Funds for Camp Intervention to target Title I students. And so if we were to take a different funding source and add to it, then it gets us caught into a situation where we're supplanting in the long run. And these are one-time funds. So we were trying to provide opportunities for sites that aren't hosting a district-sponsored summer school event, to provide a summer school event that's responsive to their needs. So it is possible that they could utilize a partnership project application to provide a Camp Intervention-like experience for, for students at their particular school. But because we've, this piece has already been built in the infrastructure of our system along the way utilizing Title I, it became very tricky for us to be able to expand beyond hosting at Title I sites.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I think we have many Title students at many schools, but we, that's where specifically those funds, only Title I schools get Title I funds. So, and that's the, you know, we go to that certain percentage. And so that's really why that reason is there. So I appreciate the question and, and good clarification on that.
Okay, and my last one. Page 19, you talked there about co-teaching there. Are we using, in terms of, are the models that we're thinking about yet to be fleshed out? Or are they in the same kind of co-teaching that we did at Dyer Kelly? What, what are you thinking about there?
So we wanted to provide flexibility for schools to identify the strategy that they were going to use the additional staffing. So it could be co-teaching. And if it is co-teaching, I think what's important, our, our lessons learned, particularly from the work at Dyer Kelly, is that co-teaching is a practice that also involves a relationship. And you have to have agency and ownership of how you implement it. So for us, there are a variety of ways to implement co-teaching. But if a school decides that they're going to use co-teaching instead of reducing class size or providing small group pullouts, they need to determine the path on the, for co-teaching that's going to work best based off the students that they have. So this is another area where we're, we're trying to provide suggestions, parameters for sites in terms of implementation when they receive that additional staffing, but not be directive in terms of, if you're going to do co-teaching, we, this is the way that you're going to do it.
I, I think to build off that a little even as we've dug down into greater detail. And if we look at like I Am One and providing additional supports and math teachers at schools, we didn't always see as much positive outcomes when we lowered class sizes, but we think we can get to a lower, lower level this time. But it would fascinating to, to go to a school where you have two teachers that work really well together, who could co-teach? And then look at, okay, we've drawn down classes to these levels. And then after a year, what did we learn from those two models? Because we may find that one has been more successful, and if it has, why? And so that's where I think, again, the local control comes in.
Thank you. This is amazing effort.
Thank you.
We do have a request for one additional item from Ms. Creason, so I'm going to circle back.
I'm sorry, I'll be quick. I, I appreciate all the mental health supports that were listed. And I'm just wondering, are those mental health supports also going to be available to staff?
It's not that they couldn't be. I think when we, or the intention was for students, the care solace is something that staff can utilize too. But overall, staff, staff wellness has been a part of our conversation. And so we will figure out how to provide more supports for our staff. In the plan, though, it was specific towards students. Yeah.
And, and I can speak to the fact as well that, that is an issue that's not here, but that we're talking about. One of our, our labor partners, I just had a conversation with them the other day about what could that look like as we move into next year of the supports? So not something you would see here directly for staff, because the focus is on, on those groups that were identified, but something we are aware of.
No, I appreciate that. And I, I guess why my head went to it in this topic is because we need our staff to be well, to help our kids get through the learning loss. You know, it's the trickle-down, it's just hard, the whole thing's been hard on everybody and not just teachers. I mean, all the staffing, you guys, I mean, everybody that needs it, so we could all do the best job for the kids. So that's why my brain went there, but I totally understand why it wouldn't be part of this. But I'm glad to hear that it's something that's being considered.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think just quickly, it's important to take a, a little bit of a step back. I mean, this is pretty unprecedented, at least certainly while I've served on the board, but probably since I've been involved in public education. I mean, I don't remember the last time someone said, hey, figure out how to spend millions of dollars in a couple of weeks, ready, set, go. So I just want to express my extraordinary gratitude for the amount of detail included in here, for how quickly we had to move. I know, I'm, I'm positive, I, I don't know how many, but I'm positive. It took a lot of probably late nights and a lot of collaboration. So I really appreciate it. And I just also want to call out, you know, the, the templates that come from CDE and some of our other partners tend to be pretty broad. I don't know, I haven't seen a lot of conversations where the Extended Learning Opportunity Funds and ASSER are intentionally woven together. And so I think it's just really important to call that out because that wasn't easy. I think a lot of people are probably saying, well, we've got this bucket of funds, let's figure out what to do here. And then we've got this bucket of funds and we'll figure out what to do here. And so to kind of put it on paper, what it looks like, to have them, you know, melded together in a, in a way that makes sense of serving our students and our community is really to be commended. So I just want to say thank you very much. That, that being said, it came together very quickly. And what I also just want to point out for posterity, if nothing else, is these are kind of very, very strong and educated guesses on what folks might need. And that local control piece, right, will lend itself to some flexibility. So what I don't want to happen is, three years from now, if someone took a chart of our expenditures and compared it to this and say, oh, well, you all failed. Well, that's not the case. We're going to have to be flexible moving forward, and this is the starting point. And so with that in mind, I am going to take just a little bit of liberties to say, knowing that there's still some flexibilities built in. First, I just want to call out in, in the template, in the specifics, I mean, the flex schedule part, and you mentioned it in your presentation, but the amount of resources dedicated to that, again, it's somewhat repetitive because my colleagues have pointed it out as well. But I think it reflects that, you know, we're listening to what has been working and what people tell us is working and not just making a wild guess. So I was really excited to see the level of investment there. And so that's on page 18. On 20, I was super excited to see the high school students and the peer tutor component. Would love, if there's room, to see that bumped up a little bit more. I hope we can really, like, the students really take full advantage of that. And so if that's the case, maybe we'll be able to go a little bit beyond the 50,000 noted there. And then I also just wanted to, to point out, you know, as I've taken some time to do site visits as well, first, everyone has said they've felt extraordinarily supported. And I know that doesn't happen overnight or without a lot of work. So it was a pretty great, consistent theme to hear. But I know, you know, when I just say, what could you need? A lot of the things that come up are related to, you know, having a halftime MTSS person on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And it would just be great if you could fill in Tuesday, Thursday, or some variation of that. But kind of those half people, like, we don't split our employees in half. They're usually, you know, running around to a number of different sites, et cetera, which has a number of different impacts. But, you know, first, they're going to different sites and splitting their time. But second, you know, the site might not have full coverage. And so there's been a pretty consistent request for full coverage. And that's captured here, which I'm really, really excited. And I just wanted to, to call that out. The other piece that I've heard, and this is more, more broadly, is especially when I'm talking with staff, and I have not been shy about my excitement about a full-time return in the fall. I, I cannot completely understand why some of our staff might be, well, we're cautiously optimistic, cautiously optimistic. And I told, I get it, like, I get all of the reasons why. And we've kind of switched it up out of necessity throughout the year. But I think it really changes the way people approach the next year and approach their hiring and approach their staffing for the fall. So if we could be a little, I mean, I know we've said it here publicly, but I think it's important to be a little bit more direct in that messaging to our sites directly so that they can truly start to think about, with a little bit more freedom, what fall looks like. Because I guarantee for most of them, this is the first time anybody's been asked, how can you spend a bunch of money overnight? Like, one, that paradigm shift is really hard to even kind of absorb so quickly. But when you combine it with, well, you know, cautious optimism, I think it's a challenging space to, to get to. And we have such a quick timeline. So I think that's just one thing that I wanted to make sure to convey to staff and to superintendent. And I don't know if you had a response.
Yeah, a couple of things. I think on your note on tutors, I, I would say I agree 100%. If that starts to grow, even some of your colleagues, when I met with them, mentioned, okay, why are we just using high school? What about college students? And Ms. Bassinelli mentioned that after I shared that, whether she said, yeah, let's, let's access everybody we can. If there are college students who want to tutor, let's do it. One of the unique things, and you know, we've been very sound fiscally for, we've had a positive certified budget for eight, nine years in a row now. And anytime we've gotten one-time funds, I, I've been a parrot again and again, saying, we don't spend one-time funds on ongoing things. We are 100% spending one-time funds on ongoing things, which is people in this plan. So I want to, I want folks to know that if we go out and we hire significant amounts of people, and, and in this plan, there are significant amounts of staff to support the work. And you're going to have to do that when you're, when you have available to you the amount of funds that we have, that there is going to come a time where, three years down the road, two years down the road, where we're going to have to kind of have a day of reckoning with this. But one of the things that we looked at was, is as we develop a three-year plan, and we even look at developing a brand-new three-year LCAP plan, when, when both of those come forward three years from now, or, or two and a half years from now, and we're looking at what's worked, and maybe some other things that we were doing that weren't working, where do we pivot? Maybe three years from now, we're back to getting significant amounts or some concentration dollars again. What did we learn as we implemented this plan? I mean, we had gotten our first set of concentration dollars last year, it was 800,000. We, we thought that would grow over the years. With COVID, we took a step back. As a three-year average, it's probably going to take us two years before we get over that 55% again. So we're trying to really be thoughtful down the road with a plan that, yeah, we're going to spend some of these one-time funds on ongoing things. But we think we've got a plan to soften that. Because it really is exciting to hire folks to do all the support work. But what's not exciting is come of February, a couple of years from now, laying off significant amounts of people. But I, I have to call that out. of people. But I have to call that out because that is our reality. And I continue to say that to our labor partners as well. And they understand that in order to do this work, we need to hire folks. And so we want to continue to come back. And you mentioned the flex period as well, that there are going to be some, many other things, I think we even learned from other districts throughout the state that they're implementing that maybe working that we can implement maybe next year or mid-year. We want to have the ability to do that as we move forward.
And I appreciate that comment. And I know in our discussions, you know, I've expressed, I certainly see that risk. I mean, I just, I don't know how, you know, we can't have this amount of money and not invest in more people. It's just, it's frankly, just not an option. And I think everybody's on board with that. And I would rather take that risk now and find some things that truly, truly work and, you know, fight the battles we have to fight two to three years from now than, you know, than not out of, out of, you know, being afraid. And so, but I appreciate you calling out that risk and kind of adding that to the dialogue here in public. And so I'm also excited about the, the summer school pieces. I am going to move to another note that I had here. And I will also just wanted to express that in some of my site visits, not every single one of our sites will be offering summer school opportunities. And so I just want to make sure that there's a plan to at least let that constituency of students know where they can go to take advantage of other ones. Can you speak to that a little bit?
So with the district-led programs, we've already been doing outreach to targeted students at other campuses. And so, for example, Camp Invention grew over the weekend just by nature of that. Our schools that are doing their individual partnership projects, some of them have partnered with each other. If they're not able to host at their school site, they partner to host it at one of the schools. There are a few, they just had a deadline of May to, or May 10th to submit their project. So we're still following up with staff on particularly the, the ones that don't have programs to see what their strategies are. So we will be following up with the sites to, to identify how are we providing access to students who don't have a program at their host site.
Great. I appreciate that. And I really appreciate the follow-up because I think if we had asked our teams, what would be the worst time to ask you to come together with new plans? Like, this would probably be it as we get together for, you know, get together all of our end of year things. And so I recognize the timing is not ideal, but that's not stopping us from dreaming big. So I'm really, really excited about that. And I appreciate your work and also, you know, all of our administrators' work and everybody that's put together a plan and will be putting together a plan, et cetera. And my last comment is just, the one student group that I didn't see mentioned in the plan, and it's entirely possible that I missed it. And it's also incredibly likely that they are embedded in some of these support students, right? But it's our homeless students. Like, I have to believe that there are some unique needs to them that we could consider supporting in this plan. And so I know a lot of what's in here supports them.
Yeah.
But I would just be curious if there were a couple of things there that we could consider that to meet their unique needs.
Adding more specifics to homeless foster youth inside the plan? Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. This is a pretty big item. So I'm going to just ask one more time if there's any follow-ups or any secondary comments from anyone. Okay. Well, seeing none. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to the team. Much appreciated. This is very, very exciting and pretty unprecedented.
Yeah, I want to thank them. They spent a lot of time helping develop the plan. And so I brought them in to help respond to questions, but I didn't give them much time to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. This was a discussion item, as mentioned, and it will come back to the board for action on May 25. We are now at item I2, naming the new middle school at Encina, Mr. Schumake.
Good evening, President Vasquez, Board Member Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation to the board to discuss naming of our new middle school, Katherine Johnson Middle School. As Dr. Henry shared with you on April 27, the site engaged with the staff, students, and community over the past few months in a very thoughtful process to determine the new middle school name. Per our district policy, all middle schools must have a great name. Thus, names like Louis Pasteur and Andrew Carnegie. Initially, we had 111 great names submitted. The school design team vetted and narrowed that list, and then again, engaged the staff and students and community for additional feedback. Does it sound like I'm cutting out, or is it just on my?
You're all good. We can hear you.
Okay. The Encina community was very clear with their preference, with 69.3% favoring Katherine Johnson. Six, since then, the school design team, site leadership team, district sponsorship team, the facilities committee, and cabinet have all had the opportunity to provide feedback. The responses have been nothing less than overwhelming, supportive of the name with the facility committee, as Mr. Tucker shared tonight, and cabinet, both unanimously endorsing and supporting the new name within this past week. As you know, Katherine Johnson's attributes are impressive. She was a mathematician for NASA, and her math literally helped us land on the moon. She overcame sexism and racism, being one of the only African American female mathematicians working for NASA. And she embodies key values that the community embraces, such as education, innovation, problem solving, fearlessness, and a collaborative spirit. In sum, Katherine Johnson is a great name. And at this time, I'd like to answer any questions if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. First, I'm going to check in with Mr. Allen to see if we have any public comments on this item.
We've not had any comments submitted. And if you would like to make a comment on this item, and you've joined us on Zoom, now would be the time to raise your hand. And seeing no raised hands at this time, President Vasquez.
Okay, thank you. Do any board members have questions or comments? Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Doctor, Mr. Schumake, thank you so much. And especially the, all the work, there was quite a bit of work to get to this point. And Dr. Henry, she did a great job. I wish my colleagues could have seen her presentation to the facilities committee when she did this. If you thought it was exciting here, you should have seen when she did it there. It was, it was very well done. And so our, please pass our sincere thanks to her. And my question now is now that, assuming we go forward with this name, we have a mascot yet? Or is that the next step?
That's the next step. I almost baked that into this, but no, our next step really is colors and mascot. And you think determining the name was fierce conversation? Yeah, I've had several that I've shared with them. They've all been shot down so far. But yeah, oh yeah, this is, it's community, it's going out to the community of students. In fact, they had a couple of names that they floated out initially, just the staff. And they did an informal survey with students, and quite a few of them got shot down for a variety of reasons that the staff hadn't even thought of. So I know that that will be an exciting moment when we're able to determine those colors in the mascot. But I think that's going to be, I think they, they want to have it done before August, when kids arrive, so they can have the swag and be ready to embrace that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great question. And Dr. Henry will be here when this comes up for action.
Ms. Costa.
I put a giant heart on this particular item. It really, I was so impressed with the amount of community involvement. And I think that the name of Katherine Johnson is a perfect name to inspire our students throughout the year. So please pass at least my appreciation to all the people who worked on this. And it's a good thing we don't have to vote on the colors and the mascot, just the name. So I'm grateful.
Ms. Creason.
It's all very exciting. And I know after our last board meeting, I got a couple of people reaching out with their votes. I'm like, I have no power over this. But I'll say the majority won. So this is really exciting. And I just want to recognize, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the only black woman honored in our district in this way. Is that correct?
You put me on the spot, but I know at the middle school level, I, yeah, I would believe so. And the, the staff, the community was very intentional. They, from the get-go, anchored themselves in wanting to have a woman of color as a name in that. And to their great pleasure, that happened.
And the intentionality is how these things happen, right? So I, I'm just really excited. I think it's a big, huge deal. And although that this is part of the Encina community, let it be a beacon for the whole district, right? So it's really exciting. Thanks.
I'm also equally thrilled, or just as thrilled. This is, this is very exciting. I'm a huge NASA fan. I'm a huge Katherine Johnson fan. Actually, I have a Lego set with Katherine Johnson and a spaceship, and I forgot it. But I'm going to bring it to the next meeting with my NASA shirt. You have the same one, don't you? Superintendent Kern has the same one. I am just so excited. So you can expect me to like, show up possibly in full costume to whatever events are taking place. I'm just so excited. I mean, symbolism is significant, but also just, again, the, this was, this was a choice. It was a very, very deliberate choice. And I'm just so proud and also equally appreciative that it's, was community-led and that it didn't come to us. Because particularly for the last two, I don't, that would have been possibly one of our most controversial votes. So, no, I'm just extraordinarily thankful and very, very excited. Do any board members have any of the questions or comments at this time? Okay, it is a discussion item this evening, and it'll come back for action on May 25.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are at item I3, COVID-19 update. Superintendent Kern.
President Vasquez, board members, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Allen, and he is going to provide a short update for us.
Good evening, President Vasquez, members of the board. We have three items to update you on tonight for our COVID-19 update. The first I want to talk about are some updates to the quarantine guidelines that came through last week. So as you know, things are continuously changing for us. And last week, we finally saw the state's multiple agencies align their guidance on the quarantining of vaccinated individuals with some recently updated guidance from the Centers for Disease Control at the federal level. So with that change, we have now adopted that practice to where those individuals, both students and staff, who have been vaccinated, are no longer required to quarantine if they are exposed to a positive individual, somebody who tests positive for the COVID-19 virus. So that will certainly allow many, many more of our students and staff to be able to stay inside the classroom when we do have concerns on campuses. So that's a good change for us. And we are happy to be able to do that safely for everybody as well. We are being very thoughtful about implementing that process. So if there's a student in that situation, they do need to show proof of their vaccination status to their school site. That's recorded in the student information system under the vaccination screen. For our staff members, they are asked to submit proof of their vaccination via a secure online form that is then verified by district staff. So we keep all that information confidential, but we are able to then verify that and make sure that they can be released from quarantine as well. So again, making sure that we can get students and staff back into classrooms as quickly as possible. That leads us into our second topic, which is vaccinations for our students and for our youth. You may have heard that this week, federal officials have indeed started to move towards authorization of the Pfizer vaccine for those students as young as age 12. Currently, those 16 and older are authorized to receive that Pfizer vaccine. There are a couple more hoops to jump through before that vaccine gets its final approval for those younger students. But we do expect that to happen by the end of this week. So that is early as Monday of next week, students from age 12 and above will be eligible for that Pfizer vaccination. So with that, we are working with a number of community partners to try and schedule vaccination clinics for our students who are interested in being vaccinated. We do hope that we will be able to host our first vaccination clinic focused on students next Wednesday in partnership with one of the local, with one of the national pharmacy change chains that operates here locally. So we're still working on some of those details and awaiting that final authorization for the vaccine to be eligible for those age 12 and up. So we hope to have more to share on that by the end of this week. And then the final thing I wanted to update you on tonight is in preparing for next year.
Trent, just precursor, community-wise, because I think there'll be some interest, you want to share where we think the clinic will be? Because it's not where we had done most of our clinics previously.
Yeah. So when we were focused on our staff vaccination clinics, we chose a very central location at Del Campo. As we've looked at the situation and the availability of vaccines now, we have greater vaccine availability in the community in general. Still not universal, still a little hard to get to, but by and large, much more accessible. So we are focusing our efforts to make sure that we're helping overcome some of those gaps in access to either transportation or medical services. So we are focused on the West End of the district initially. Now, we are hoping to host this first vaccination clinic next week at Encina High School. So then the final item we wanted to update you on tonight was in preparing for next year, and talk a little bit about the survey that we do hope to put out next week to all of our families. And there's a couple of purposes in doing the survey that I wanted to touch on. One is, as President Vasquez touched on a little bit earlier, it's an opportunity for us to really signal and have some communication with our families about what next year will look like. So families will be asked to consider what their educational options will be for next year. And we will make very clear to them that next school year will be a return to our traditional schedule, five days a week, full-time. So schedules will primarily be what they were pre-March 2020. So that will be very clear, very upfront for folks so that they can have that context as they consider these other options. But we do want families to be aware that we will continue to offer multiple options to them, including our independent study option for grades nine through 12, our homeschool option for TK through eighth grade, as well as our new virtual academy option that will be for through sixth grade. So as we put that survey out, the intent is not to be binding for families. The choice will not lock them into an option, but it's really designed to give us a look at what the demand level is for that virtual option so that we can make sure that we have the appropriate staff and resources in place to make those things successful.
Trent, that virtual often, option will be TK 12. It'll look different, TK 6, and it will, so our TK, really elementary versus secondary. And, and we'll actually have an item coming to the next board meeting that speaks a little bit to that as well.
And that is what we have for you this evening, unless Superintendent Kern has anything else we'd like to touch on.
Okay, thank you both. Is there any public comment on this item?
I do have one hand raised at this time.
Okay, as a reminder, comment, visitor comments are limited to two minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Our first comment will come from Mr. Ben Avi. Mr. Avi, when you're ready, sir.
Thank you, President Vasquez, members of the board. I appreciate Trent's comment about the district's intent on signaling to families that we will be returning to school full-time with pre-COVID instructional periods in time at school. I think that is absolutely vital. It has to be perfectly clear for parents. There cannot be any ambiguous statements in there. Parents are truly trying to plan for the fall right now. And the comment I keep hearing is, they told us we were going back last spring. I understand that conditions have changed. Things have changed. It's much more concrete now. But I think because of the experience last spring, because of the experience in the fall and the winter, and how everything kept changing, I think we clearly need to signal the intent and quite frankly, make the statement, we are going back. Parents need that so that they can make decisions. And I think President Vasquez has heard it as well, when she's speaking with folks at local schools, you hear cautiously optimistic. People are entertaining that level of doubt. We, we have to address that. We have to get rid of it. We have to say we're going back. The one piece I didn't hear mentioned is, I do think that there is a vital opportunity where we need to have an open town hall where you can hear from parents about distance learning. A lot of effort went into it. There was a lot of great work around it. But I have not truly heard a good feedback loop with the board on how everything actually went from a parent perspective. And I think that is vital, especially as you are looking to the future, where you may continue to have distance learning options within your curriculum for students that choose it. You need to hear what worked and what didn't work so that you can improve in the future. The only way to do that is an open forum where parents can truly speak their mind. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for your comment, Mr. Avi. Our next comment will come from Ms. Katie Reed. When you're ready, Ms. Reed.
Good evening. My comment may now be moved.
Good evening. My comment may now be moved and duplicative. I think the last five or 10 minutes that I just listened to of tonight's board meeting is the happiest I've been in about a year. But I do sit on two school PTO, PTSA boards in our district. And in meetings on both of those boards, recent discussions have included the loss of students due to unenrollment and the resulting loss of staff when those student numbers are dropping. And I do believe that this pattern will really only continue until our district makes their purported intentions clear. I agree with Ben Avi that parents need you to spit, to articulate a specific plan and a return date, no later than June 1st. Mr. Allen sent a group of us parents with San Juan parents an email yesterday on behalf of the board and the superintendent confirming that San Juan Unified will begin the 2022 school year on August 12th with the traditional full day, full time schedule. But I felt a bit of gaslighting in that email, to be honest, suggesting that the return to full time in-person learning in August has always been a foregone conclusion. I've listened to these board meetings since last spring and I've heard a lot of we hope twos and we're planning twos. And if I missed board comments prior to President Viasquez and Mr. Trent's tonight, I apologize. But in my opinion, your commitment to an August 12th start date for full time learning does in fact need to go out district wide to families in writing. And until this happens, I don't think our, our students and our parents will believe anything more than that's what you're hoping to or planning to do in August. Because we believe that that's what you hoped to do in spring, in August, in October, in January. And it still didn't even feel like it was really going to happen when it finally did in March. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment, Ms. Reed. And President Viasquez, that was our final comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments at this time? Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. Allen, thank you so much. I appreciate you making it fairly clear in my mind what are, we're planning to do as a district. But I think we, I, from the comments and me personally, I think we can do just a little bit more. And this is what I mean. The survey is going to obviously be very clear about what our intent is returning the five days pre, like we were pre-COVID. But that survey may not touch everybody that we want to touch. And what I, I, I am suggesting that we go beyond by making sure that our principals and our school sites are armed with that absolute direction that you plan on giving in this survey. So each school site is clearly aware when a parent that may have not heard about their survey, know about their survey can, can confidently say, hey, we are coming back five days a week, just like we did pre-COVID. If that could be arranged, I think that will be crystal clear. I think you heard comments tonight that are asking for that clarity. So if we, we can maybe do that, that would be awesome. And second, the, the vaccinations at Encina, will our nurses be able to perform those shots? Or do we have to go to a third party service?
Right now for those vaccinations, it would appear that our community partner is going to be able to provide the staffing that will actually administer the shots. So that will be pharmacists from the partner that we're working with. So we will not be using our nurses for administering shots directly. However, there are a variety of other volunteer positions that we will need to be filling. So there will be opportunities for staff of a variety of backgrounds to be able to assist with that process as well.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Creason?
This was a wonderful update and I know I'm excited to get my kid back to school for a long time, for a full day. And so a couple of thoughts that I have about the survey specifically. I know that there was a lot of confusion with another survey that we sent out where folks got the impression or perceived it was a vote. And so I want to just express that, do whatever we need to do with clarifying language. So folks know this isn't a vote situation and really understand the intent of the survey. I think that's pretty important. Also just want to call out, I'm really happy to hear that we're going to be doing the first clinic at Encina. It sounds like we are going to go, you know, well, you did say we're going to go where the, the gaps exist. So that's really great news. I think it's important though, that we're sure to get the word out to all of our school sites. So, you know, folks that can travel can, and maybe even give some information about transportation options. You know, because we know that there's folks that are in, on the other side, they're still struggling, right? So, you know, if there's transport, are we still doing the Free RT program? Is that even, okay. It was something I thought about. It's like, I don't know if people, if we still are doing that or people even know about it anymore because we weren't going to school sites. That may be an option to get people there. So I'm just thinking about transportation issues for folks that aren't necessarily in the gap areas, but are also experiencing disparities.
Ms. Creason, one of the things I can say is the difference, pardon me, that we have now, when we were trying to get all of our adults vaccinated, was first, when we think about those who are most affected, but when we were talking about bringing our workforce back, we really have between now and the start of school year to try and get as many of those kids. So I think there will be opportunities for us to have those clinics throughout the region. And so, and, and I even know like the other side of town, we were, we were having a conversation about this. Folsom Cordova is going to be doing some vaccination clinics at, say, Cordova High and then maybe in the Folsom area. I know some of the Placer County Schools at Borders. So I think there will be some opportunities even right around our periphery for us to be able to have our, maybe even advertise some of those and have folks go to those as well.
That's great. And thank you for calling that out because it's not something I had thought about. It's, we have more time. It's not as a rush as it was with the other, other group. So thank you.
Ms. Costa?
Actually, Mr. Kern just answered my question. So I appreciated that.
Fantastic. I appreciate the update. Seeing no further comments or questions, I just want to express my excitement. I remember when our first clinics got off the ground. I mean, I had very literally had dreams about that day. My excitement and enthusiasm for vaccinating another population of our community has not waned at all. So with that, if I can participate in Wednesday in some way, I will 100% be there because I'm super, super excited. And yes, we've got a little bit of extra time, but I just, there's still a sense of urgency. I mean, the unpredictability of COVID has shown itself time and time again. So I'm excited. Can't wait to see it happen. Thank you to the team to, you know, for being proactive in those outreach to our partners. I know it, it didn't just pop up overnight. So I appreciate the efforts that have gone into that. I seeing no further comments or questions. I appreciate the update. Thank you, Mr. Allen and Superintendent Kern. We are now at item I four, Conveyance of Easement at Skycrest Elementary School. Mr. Camarda, welcome back.
Thank you, President Viasquez. Tonight's facilities item is an action item. It is the conveyance of the easement at Skycrest Elementary School. And the superintendent is recommending that the board call a public hearing in order to solicit public comment and adopt resolution number 3041, declaring the conveyance of a permanent easement at Skycrest Elementary School to the Citrus Heights Water District.
I declare the topic of conveying a permanent easement at Skycrest Elementary School to the Citrus Heights Water District, a public hearing, and it is now open for public comment. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
We've had no written comments submitted and we do not have any hands raised at this time.
Just take a quick beat in case anybody decides to raise their hand. Okay, there being none, I declare the public hearing closed. Do board members have any questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3041, conveying a permanent easement at Skycrest Elementary School to the Citrus Heights Water District? So moved by Dr. McKibben. Is there a second? And seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous. We are at item I five, Conveyance of Easements at Deterding Elementary School. Mr. Camarda.
Thank you again, President Viasquez and board members. Superintendent Kern, again, another action item for the conveyance of an easement at Deterding Elementary School. The superintendent is recommending that the board call a public hearing in order to solicit, solicit public comment and adopt resolution number 3043, declaring the conveyance of three permanent easements at Deterding Elementary School to the Carmichael Water District.
I declare the topic of conveying three permanent easements at Deterding Elementary School to the Carmichael Water District, a public hearing, and it is now open for public comment. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments at this time?
We have no written comments submitted. And again, I would remind you, if you've joined us on Zoom, would like to offer a comment. It's that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen on your mobile device or desktop client or star nine on your telephone keypad. We have no raised hands at this time, President Viasquez.
Okay, going once, going twice. There being no further public comments, I declare the public hearing closed. Do any board members have questions or comment? Okay, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3043, conveying three permanent easements at Deterding Elementary to the Carmichael Water District?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Costa. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at item I six, Establishment of Fund 08 Student Activity Special Revenue Fund. Phil Doldlaw, Director of Fiscal Services, will present the item. Please begin when you're ready, Ms. Doldlaw.
Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board and Superintendent Kern. Tonight, the superintendent is recommending that the board adopt resolution numbers 3048, establishing Fund 08 Student Activity Special Revenue Fund to separately report the student body activities that do not meet the fiduciary activity criteria pursuant to Government Accounting Standards Board's GASP statement 84. Basically, we are being directed by CDE to account for associated student body activities in Fund 08 since they have determined that school districts have administrative involvement in ASB's activities because the board appointed employees to official, I'm sorry, because the activities appointed employee to official designated by the school board, school district governing board, which is usually the principal and at the school site, has the ability to approve, disapprove and modify expenditures.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We've had no submitted comments and we do not have any hands raised at this time.
Do any board members have questions or comments? Dr. McKibben? Dr. McKibben, there, perfect.
Come on.
There we go.
Can you, I, I'm a little fuzzy on this one. Can you explain how what we're moving to is different than what we currently do?
Currently, it is in a custodial fund, Fund 95, which is not reportable to, to CDE as a governmental activity account. Now they are requesting us to move it to Fund 8, which is considered a special revenue fund by, by GASP 84. So it's just a shift from being a custodial account to being a governmental account.
Because I remember, it's been a while since I've been on the financial things, but student accounts were among the most difficult when it came to audits and things like that. Is this, is the reason for doing this to try to account for, to have a better accounting? Or what do you think the reason for this is?
Well, because the, because the principals are basically appointed by the board to be able to approve, disapprove and modify expenditures. They, CDE basically said that it, it acts more likely as the, a special revenue fund, just like Fund 13, which is the cafeteria fund and adult ed fund, instead of a being set aside fund that is not part of what's being reported directly to them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments on this item? Superintendent is thinking about, no, he's going to take a pass. No, that's okay. I don't have any further questions or comments. Thank you for the presentation. But I also do want to take a moment to say thank you and acknowledge you. I believe this is likely your last presentation before the board after a almost 35-year career, more than that, if the math is right. So thank you for your incredible service to our students and to our school sites and to our entire community. We truly, truly appreciate it and you will be missed.
I think Phil started in the district in dispatch. Is that correct? I heard that today.
That's correct. Working the graveyard shift.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Costa? Yeah, I'm not quite ready yet. We're, we're not quite finished yet. I just wanted to make sure to, to acknowledge Ms. Doldlaw. This is an action item as it has been pointed out. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3048, establishing Fund 8, the Student Activity Special Revenue Fund to separately report the student body activities that do not meet the fiduciary activity criteria pursuant to Government Accounting Standards Board Statement 84? It's been moved by Ms. Creason. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Dr. McKibben. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. We are now at item I seven, Presentation of the District's Proposal with SJPEC for Successor Contract 2021-2022. Mr. Schumake?
Yes, good evening, President Viasquez, board members, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the district's bargaining interests with the San Juan Professional Educators Coalition for 2021-2022 reopeners for discussion. At this time, I can answer any questions if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We've had no submitted comments and we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, do any of my colleagues have questions or comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, public comment and action is scheduled for May 25th. We are at item I eight, Presentation of the District's Proposal with CSCEA for Successor Contract 2021-2022. Mr. Schumake?
I'm also here tonight to present the district's bargaining interests with the California School Employees Association, Chapter 127, for the 2021-2022 reopeners for discussion. At this time, I can answer any questions if needed.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments on this item?
We do not have any submitted comments, nor do we have any raised hands at this time.
Do any board members have questions or comments? Seeing none, public comment and action is scheduled for May 25th. We are at item I nine, Implementation of Agreements with SJTA, CSCEA, SJPEC Supervisors and Teamsters. Mr. Schumake?
Yes, I'm also here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation to approve the implementation of the side letters of agreements with the San Juan Teachers Association, California School Employees Association, Chapter 127, San Juan Professional Educators Coalition, Teamsters Local 150, and the San Juan Supervisors Association. This is an action item and I'm happy to answer any questions if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we, our, thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not have any submitted comments, nor do we have any raised hands.
Do my colleagues have any questions or comments for Mr. Schumake? This item was last presented on April 27th and it's an action item. Is there a motion to approve the implementation of agreements with SJTA, CSCEA, SJPAC Supervisors and Teamsters, which includes additional paydays during the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year? It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Schumake, for all of your incredible work. We have one more. I was about to, okay. We're at item I 10, Implementation of Agreements with SJA, Cabinet Confidential and Unrepresented Groups. Mr. Schumake?
Yeah, lastly, I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation to approve the implementation of the agreements with the San Juan Administrators Association, Cabinet Confidential and Unrepresented Groups. This is an action item and again, I'm happy to answer any questions if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not have any submitted comments nor raised hands.
Okay, this is an action item. Is there a motion to approve the implementation of agreements with SJA, Cabinet Confidential and Unrepresented Groups, which includes additional paydays during the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year? It's been moved by Dr. McKibben and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate. It's been moved by Dr. McKibben and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. Mr. Schumake, thank you very much for your incredible work.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, we are at item J, Board Report. Are there any board reports? Ms. Costa. Ms. Costa, your mic is off.
No, it went on. Just did it again. There we go.
There we go.
I would like to echo what uh some of my other colleagues said about the avid celebration at El Camino. It was an inspiring event, as it always is, but especially. After not being at in-person student events for so long, it was just very. Exciting to be back with the students and the speakers as at every avid celebration I have attended for. Probably twenty years now, have always made me realize. The amount of persistence, grit, hard work that so many of our students. Um, have in order to succeed. And when they succeed, it is so exciting to listen to their plans for the future. And the fact that they have hopes to mentor other students, and that really says a lot. Also, uh, we just, we have had so many ceremonies in the last two weeks. The Seal of Biliteracy, our valuable partners, the Spirit Event. Um, every one of those takes so much time on the part of staff, and yet they have been flawless. And a way to honor students and our partners and our community. And I just want to thank people for continuing to go above and beyond. Finally, the Rio Jazz Groups, two of our Rio Jazz Groups were. Um, honored for national recognition. And thanks to Band Director Josh Murray and the musicians and their families. I know it takes hard work on everybody's part, and for our students to be recognized nationally again really says a lot. So, thank you.
Mr. Hernandez. Oh, sorry, Ms. Creason.
Ditto to a lot of what Ms. Costa said. Um, the only things I would add is I was able to attend. A good portion of the Girls Youth Summit. Um, it was fabulous. It was just wonderfully done. I really, really enjoyed the time I got to be there. It's always, it was really inspiring. So I appreciate the partnership that made that happen. Um, and I hope that we continue that work. Uh, and also just wanted to note Star King. I was able to go and visit the campus and help out with their food distribution program, um, which was so, so cool. And so I might need a little help, Superintendent Kern, because I don't know that I understand all the ins and outs. But it's my understanding that there is a restaurant partner group that provides meals. And I gotta tell you, this food smelled so good. I mean, it's so, so good. Um, it's all packaged up all super nice. You go on a Friday. Um, it's just a seamless process where you talk to cars about to pick up their kids, seeing if they want some meals. And you write a couple of things down and hand it to them. I mean, flawless. I mean, the the. On so many levels, just the community coming together to provide the meals, the school site that was able to facilitate it in such a seamless way. I know, you know, we had district staff there that's making it all happen. It would just was, it was something very special.
Yeah, it's, I believe it's the Mulvaney Group, and they own some restaurants. And they just wanted to give back, and they started this in Sac City. And they reached out to us and said, again, we would like to just be able to provide meals for the community. And I think, Ms. Creason, it's pretty neat because they get food for the full weekend, don't they?
Yep.
It's kind of like a big box or two boxes and a smaller, but there's, there's quite a bit of food really for families for the weekend. So say thank you for supporting that. And really, um, again, Natalia, I believe, in in our. Community department really did a lot of work to get this going, and I'm sure there were others as well, so.
Yep, it was fabulous. And yeah, the boxes came for enough food for four people, but you could get more, you know, and they had halal and, you know, really, um. Considerate of people's dietary needs and restrictions, vegetarian, I mean, and it smelled so good. So it was, it was a really a pleasure to be a part of that program, and I'm just very thankful it's happening.
Wonderful. Dr. McKibben?
Just wanted, uh, that for for a little over a year, I I did my first site visits, and that's the thing I wanted to thank. The three schools that took their time to indulge me in my questions and so forth. And it was very nice to get back in into schools and see students and and do all those sorts of things. Also wanted to mention that uh I that was uh on uh whatever night it was. Thursday night had El Cap and then switched over to the San Juan Educational Foundation a- and then back to back to El Cap again. And wanted to say thank you to to the people of El Cap, and that they're beginning to come together and really ask good, solid questions. And I, and that are, will be going to the superintendent, just one more thing, uh, and and so forth. But I was impressed with the kinds of questions that they were asking. And finally, wanted to, wanted to say, it was very impressive, uh, uh, hearing about our partnerships and that sort of thing. And and having somewhere between sixty and seventy partnerships in this school district speaks to how we can do things like like what we just saw in I one. And so forth. And wanted to thank indeed those partners for for the roles they have in making us a better school, school district.
Fantastic. And my colleagues have uh hit upon a lot of um the activities that I've been able to attend over the last two weeks or so. A couple of things to add is I'm gonna put in a plug for um our San Juan Student Podcast Team. Um, Nannick, who's a member of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, started a podcast, and I got to um join as a guest, which was. Um, kind of nerve wracking. Like, I actually really like podcasts, and I had listened to every single one of his episodes, including the one with Superintendent Kern. So I'll just let you all know that that is there as well. Uh, but it was just a lot of fun to be able um to join them um and have a discussion with them. We also had um our Administrator of the Year awards as well, where a lot of our um, our team members were very, very appropriately acknowledged. And it was just a fun and festive morning. Also want to plug the We Inspire Sisterhood Girls Youth Summit. That was fun because it was also a cross district. Um, engagement, Sac City was there as well. Um, and the, it was just a fun morning. I mean, it was probably the most fun virtual event I've ever been to, and I was definitely dancing at home by myself to the DJ. Um, and that's probably for the best for everyone. Um, but I also want to just thank um. Our face team and Bonita in particular and the team for really, you know, it's been a series of events all week. Um, so that was one of many, and I would just want to say an extraordinary thank you to the team who who put that together. Um, Dr. McKibben and I also got to um participate in our Citrus Heights two by two with our um city partners. Um, which was good after with COVID, we had taken a little bit um of of a break, but it was nice to to connect. And um, they've got a lot of exciting things going on in terms of kind of reengaging community partners, and we look forward to being a part of that. And we were able to update them on our um, on our plans for the fall and a number of other initiatives. Um, so that was fantastic. Um, on the Seal of Biliteracy, that was um a wonderful event as well. We were able to honor four hundred and thirty San Juan students, which is just incredible. And was a record um for all of the years of participation, and we had seventeen students that had got two seals of biliteracy. And we got, we had six students that had three, which is just incredible. Um, so that was uh very, very exciting, and um, of course, our MVP celebration as well. And so even though I just said I wasn't going to repeat everything, I just really appreciated every single one of these events, and so I went ahead and repeated them. Um, and in addition to that, have also been able to make the rounds um to our school sites and and do some school visits. And um, I just forgot how inspiring they are and how much fun they are when I'm on a campus. I've been able to visit Churchill, pasture, Oakview, and Woodside in the last couple of days. So shout out and big thank you to Principal Gibbons, Principal Dolan, Principal Walters, and Principal Broyles. Um, each one of them was an absolute blast at Churchill. I got to um kind of catch the band students practicing outside. Uh, it was wonderful, slightly off key music that was just music to my ears because it was practice is practice. But they're looking forward to hopefully some, some events to be able to show off all their hard work. Um, but it was just, it was just so wonderful. And then I also got to halt Principal Gibbons, um, give out some of the staff appreciation goodies. And just say thanks to a lot of the staff there, which which was nice. Um, and so I've just really enjoyed the last couple of days. It's been a blast, and I again want to say. Thanks to all the staff and the principals who've taken the time out of their day um to share their thoughts and ideas with me. Um, and we appreciate you all. I look forward to more site visits. Um, that is all from me. Mr. Kern, did you have anything to add? Okay, and then um, we are now at item K, Future Agenda Items. Do any board members wish to add any I um, anything to future agenda items? Seeing none, we are at item L, Visitor Comments. Mr. Allen, are there any visitor comments?
I do have one submitted comment at this time.
Okay, I would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes, and under the Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we're not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond at this time. The superintendent can refer um items to staff to follow up with you. Um, please begin our public commenter when you're ready.
Uh, our submitted comment comes from Tiffany Gardett, who writes, all of us have been hit hard by the pandemic as a community. What can we do to get rapid testing supplies for students to prevent the constant rotation of quarantine we seem to be having? Since school has been back in session, my kids have been quarantined due to exposure for more days than they've been able to attend. This has been detrimental to their learning and social support. I fear for their education moving forward into middle school with lack of preparation and understanding of instruction. And that is our only comment at this time.
Okay, um, seeing no further public comment, we do not need to return to closed session at this time, so we are adjourned. Thank you.
Our next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for May twenty fifth. We do hope you'll be able to join us. We anticipate being on Zoom and YouTube as well. And with a six thirty PM start time for public session. Thank you again for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.